Oh, there's the disaster they had in Texas. It might be nice to say something about that.
That's the second one you just talked about. Negative.
I think so, too.
She looks so pretty. Tell her she looks so pretty. She always looks so beautiful. She's so pretty. Be sure to tell her I said she looked beautiful. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Sedalia City Council on the seventh day of July, part of the 2025-2026 legislative session. The meeting is now called to order. The first item on our agenda is legislative prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Chaplain Mattson, you have the floor to lead us in prayer.
Would you please stand as able and join me in our invocation this evening? Dear Lord, dear Father of us all, we come to you tonight to ask your guidance as the City Council of Sedalia meets to hear about, discuss questions, and make decisions for the betterment of our community. We are grateful for our mayor, our mayor pro tem, our administrators, our staff, all who work for this community and its citizens. We are grateful, too, for our first responders. They were 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at their own peril. Tonight, perhaps, we should take a moment of silence to remember the victims in Texas. There were victims in North Carolina as well, but of course, the great going so very badly in Curville, Texas. For those who died, those were left homeless, those were left to mourn. So if we can, let's just take a moment of silence. As we celebrate now, this year, the 250th birthday of our great country, the United States of America, this great constitutional republic, let us be truly thankful for this country we live in and for the thousands who fought and died to create and protect this great republic for these 250 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all of the military and civilians serving this great country today here and throughout the world, and we want you to bring them home safely to their families. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again. In all this, we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Present.
Bogus?
Here.
Hiller?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Franklin?
Here.
All right, let the record show that a quorum is present. We'll go ahead and move on to our annexation petition hearing submitted by Prairie Hollow Development Company, LLC. Details regarding this petition can be found on page nine of the council packet dated July 7, 2025. This hearing is an opportunity to receive comments from city staff, affected property owners, and members of the public. All remarks should be directed to the council as a body and must pertain to the proposed annexation. Council will not deliberate or decide during the hearing. Questions from council members may follow after the testimony has been received. We will now invite up the city staff to come forward. Interim City Administrator Wirt, you have the floor.
Yes, this public hearing has referenced the annexation of approximately 207 acres of unincorporated land that is owned by the Prairie Hollow Development. This action initiated actually under a previously recorded irrevocable consent to annexation and utility service agreement that was executed on August 1 of 2022 and recorded on August 11 of that year with the county. The agreement authorized the city administrator to act as an attorney, in fact, to file for annexation once the property became continuous to the city corporate limits. That verified petition for annexation has been submitted pursuant to that agreement, and the subject property is now both contiguous and compact to the current city limits. The property owner is also in agreement and wishes for the property to become part of the city of Sedalia.
Very good. We will now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to provide a statement for the record, please step to the microphone, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to give a statement. Is there anyone here? Jason, did we have anyone sign up?
No.
For the, okay, very good. Going once, going twice? No takers? All right, we will now go ahead and close the public hearing. Moving along to our service awards, we'll go ahead and invite up Chief Woolery to present a service award.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, Detective Divorce, would you like to come forward with me, please? Tonight, it is my pleasure to award Detective Casey Divorce with his 20-year service pin. Casey Divorce started at the police department on June 6, 2005. In the last 20 years, Casey has done just about every job there is to do at the police department. He started as a civilian desk officer, a patrol officer, worked as a detective, a traffic officer, a patrol sergeant, and Casey worked directly with command staff as a professional development sergeant. Officer Divorce has had the opportunities to see the very best and worst that we have to offer. I'm not going to go into them, but rest assured, Casey has some harrowing stories. I say that to say this: Through it all, Casey has never lost his compassion for people, which for me has always been one of the most significant traits that he has always shown. Casey still finds ways to create outreach to our citizens. Currently, Casey started Kaya Cares, where he takes our department dog Kaya to elementary schools and retirement homes, visiting with kids and older residents who do not get the opportunities to have contacts with law enforcement. After 20 years of law enforcement, Casey still has a heart of service, and he brings that to our citizens regularly. Detective Casey Divorce, it is my pleasure to award you your 20-year service pin.
Thank you.
Good show, sir.
Okay, moving along to our approval of our previous session minutes. The first set of session minutes is from the special council meeting dated June 12, 2025. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, moving along to the ad hoc committee meeting minutes. These are dated June 12, 2025. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve?
Take it.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding those minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, the council meeting minutes dated June 16, 2025. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding those meeting minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now, moving along to the reports of special boards, commissions, and committees. We have the acceptance of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes dated June 4, 2025. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve?
Take it.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding those meeting minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, moving along to our roll call of standing committees. First, we have Public Works. Chairwoman Franklin, you have the floor.
All right, first item up is, in 2017, sorry, the Water Department began contracting out smaller, as-needed repairs that are necessary after completing water line maintenance. Our most recent effort, rebid this work, resulted in no responses, and our current contractor has notified us a forthcoming rate increase. This increase would raise the projected annual cost contracted street repairs to approximately $125,000 for labor alone. Given these circumstances, we believe the most efficient and cost-effective solution is to transition these repairs in-house by hiring two full-time employees dedicated to the work. The total cost for two additional employees, including benefits, for the remainder of the budget year is estimated at $91,653.42. To support this transition, staff recommends budget adjustment that moves $54,953.42 from repair budget and a budget amendment to salary in the amount of $36,700 to fund the position through year end. Although this change results in increase in this year's budget, we anticipate projected savings of $90,000 in the next fiscal year by eliminating the need for outside contracting and improving efficiency. Bringing the work in-house will provide better control over the quality and timeliness of street repairs, allowing staff to respond more quickly and flexibly to the needs of each site. In addition, these new employees can assist with other important tasks, such as dirt repairs, backfill, and general cleanup utility dig sites. Service is not currently covered under our existing contract agreements.
Very good, and thank you. As this is a budget amendment, we have a resolution and then an ordinance in relation to the matter. We'll go ahead and start with the resolution. Call for the reading of Resolution 2134.
Resolution 2134. A resolution of the City Council of City of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2026.
Motion to approve?
Second?
I have a motion to approve and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, we'll move on to Bill Number 2025-113, and we will call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-113.
Bill Number 2025-113. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026 regarding Water Department staffing additions.
Second reading?
Take it.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that is on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-113. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026 regarding Water Department staffing additions.
Final passage?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that is on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor? Motion passes.
Second item is the city is requesting approval of Amendment Number One to the Phase One Design-Build Agreement with Burns &amp; McDonnell, the amount of $60,700. This amendment supports the development of an updated facility plan for north and central wastewater treatment plants to comply with abatement order and consent issued by the Missouri Department of Natural Resources on March 27, 2024. Phase One of this project, originally approved by council on June 3, 2024, involved preparation of a facility plan exploring two primary alternatives: construction of a north wastewater treatment plant at a separate site with limited central upgrades, or full consolidation north flow into expanded central wastewater treatment plant. The initial facility plan was submitted in February 2025 to meet MDR and state revolving fund, deadlines, and structured to preserve flexibility for future amendment. Amendment Number One now formalizes the evaluation of a fourth treatment alternative, central consolidation option, which proposes eliminating the north wastewater treatment plan and consolidating all operations to the central wastewater treatment plant. The scope of this amendment includes planning and conceptual design for a new north screening and pump station, a 4.5-MGD-force main to convey flows from north to central, and multiple improvements at central. These improvements include a new 150-foot diameter aeration basin, additional clarifiers, a new blower building, upgraded solids handling, a sludge pump station, UV disinfection, expansion, and related process infrastructure. Burns &amp; McDonnell will deliver updated site layouts, hydraulic profiles, flow diagrams, equipment list, and an updated opinion of probable construction cost. This approach addresses key financial and operational challenges with an absolute goal of staying within budget. Construction costs estimated for a previously considered north wastewater treatment plant exceeded the bond capacity and did not account for necessary repairs at the central plant. The proposed consolidation is anticipated to improve long-term operational efficiency by reducing the number of efficient discharge points, minimizing long-term maintenance and energy costs, and allowing for more efficient use of staff. Additionally, consolidating operations at central improves reliability and resource sharing while ensuring compliance with future discharge limits in Brushy Creek. City staff recommends approval of this amendment.
All right, let's go ahead and call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-114.
Bill Number 2025-114. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to Phase One of the Design-Build Agreement for north and central wastewater treatment plant's facility plan.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that is on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-114. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to Phase One of the Design-Build Agreement for north and central wastewater treatment plant's facility plan.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please. Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
All in favor? Motion passes.
Third item for consideration is Amendment Number 004 to Professional Services Agreement between the city and Hofer Welker LLC for the fire station, training center, bowling alley, and aquatics project. This amendment formally revises the scope of work and professional compensation associated with the project. It reflects the current direction of the project, including adjustments made during design and pre-construction process. Following the original agreement executed in 2022, staff has worked extensively with architect and construction manager at risk to identify cost-saving opportunity and re-scope several project elements to align with budget expectations determined three years ago. Despite these value engineering efforts, current estimates show the combined fire portion of the project cost has increased and now exceeds the original budget by $1.2 million. To provide counsel the most transparent information before proceeding with construction, staff is requesting a budget amendment of $1.2 million with respect to the fire station and fire training center. This would bring the total appropriation for the fire facility project to $7.5 million. Staff is optimistic the final construction bid may result in additional cost reductions. However, revised funding authorization is required at this time to ensure full project delivery.
All right, call for the reading of, and this is a budget amendment, so we're going to have a resolution and then two ordinances to follow. Call for the reading of Resolution Number 2135.
Resolution 2135. A resolution of the City Council of City of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2026.
Motion to approve?
Take it.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the resolution that is before you? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, we're going to call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-115.
Bill Number 2025-115. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026 regarding fire facility construction.
Second reading.
Second?
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that is before you? Having heard none, roll call, please.
You need another reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-115. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026 regarding fire facility construction.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call, please. Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
All in favor? All right, now, we'll call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-116.
Bill Number 2025-116. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement by and between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Hofer Welker LLC for a revision of overall project scope.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-116. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement by and between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Hofer Welker LLC for a revision of overall project scope.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please. Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor? Motion passes.
Final item. City staff is requesting council approval for an emergency purchase of mobile solids belt press for central wastewater treatment plant. The existing press at the central facility has become inoperable after years of wear and patchwork repairs, coinciding with recent aeration basin upgrades tied to Missouri Department of Natural Resources' abatement order on consent. To maintain operations, the city rented a mobile belt press at a monthly cost of $20,000. Current rental expenses are projected to exceed $300,000 to $400,000 before a permanent system could be procured using traditional engineering bidding and construction timeline estimated at 15 to 21 months. As a more cost-effective alternative, staff proposes purchasing a new 1-meter skid-mounted BDP model 3DP press from MSD Environmental for $526,000 plus $5,500 in delivery costs. This unit is functionally identical to the 1.5-meter press the city's been renting. After four additional months of rental to bridge delivery timing and applying $7,500 trading credit for the city's old press, the net total purchase cost is $604,000. This approach is expected to save the city $200,000 to $320,000 compared to continuing to rent until a permanent solution is in place. MSD Environmental has confirmed that two new units are currently available, and delivery can occur three to four months of contract execution. Staff recommends approval of this emergency purchase to reduce long-term costs, ensure operational reliability at central wastewater treatment plant, and to comply with Missouri DNR requirements.
All right, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-117.
Bill Number 2025-117. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the emergency purchase of a mounted belt press.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that is before you? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-117. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the emergency purchase of a mounted belt press.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please. Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
All in favor? All right, thank you, Chairwoman Franklin. Up next, we have public safety. Chairman Scribner, you have the floor.
We have one item up. For consideration is a resolution to approve a new mutual aid agreement between the Sedalia Fire Department and the Whitman Air Force Base Fire Department. This agreement formalizes the continuation of longstanding mutual support between the two departments for fire protection, emergency medical services, hazardous material response, and technical rescue operations. City staff recommends approval of updating the agreement, which continues to strengthen Sedalia's regional emergency response capabilities through the cooperation with Whitman Air Force Base.
All right, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-118.
Bill Number 2025-118. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for mutual aid in fire and emergency services by and between the City of Sedalia doing businesses Sedalia Fire Department and the Secretary of the Air Force acting by and through the Commander 509th Bomb Wing Whitman Air Force Base.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-118. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for mutual aid in fire and emergency services by and between the City of Sedalia doing businesses Sedalia Fire Department and the Secretary of the Air Force acting by and through the Commander 509th Bomb Wing Whitman Air Force Base.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call, please. Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
All in favor? Motion passes. All right, moving along to community development. Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. We have three items this evening under community development. The first of which is a special use permit. On May 22, 2025, the Community Development Department issued a staff memorandum to the Planning and Zoning Commission based on a special use permit application for transitional housing at 1809 West 10th Street. The application was submitted by Amber Woolery on behalf of Recovery Lighthouse, proposing to use the property as a transitional living facility for up to 10 women, including one live-in house manager. The Planning and Zoning Commission first considered the application during its regular meeting on June 4, 2025, but postponed action to July 2, 2025, meeting to allow additional time for the applicant to engage with the surrounding neighborhood and address negative public feedback received at the meeting. Following additional discussion and public input at its July 2, 2025, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 1 to deny the special use permit application. The matter now advances to the City Council for final consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-119.
Bill Number 2025-119. An ordinance granting a special use permit to Recovery Lighthouse for transitional housing to be used for a parsonage on property located at 1809 West 10th Street in the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor?
I would like to discuss, please.
Okay, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you very much. I know that this plan is very successful for a lot of people, but as a member of city council, it's my job to represent the community and the neighborhood of which this house is placed. They have started a petition, and they have 40 signatures on that petition. I've also received seven emails from different people that also live near the address in question that oppose this action.
question that oppose this action. And I just wanted to let that be on the record that there has been a petition and then multiple emails in opposition for placing this facility there.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes. I attended the June 27 meeting down on Main Street with Recovery Lighthouse. There was five employees and myself at that meeting. There was no other public that showed up. After that meeting, I went door to door along 10th Street and 11th Street. A lot of people saw me on their ring doorbells. They weren't home, but they saw me. I have also received numerous emails expressing concern for the neighborhood. While I realize this is an excellent program for recovery, I do not feel this house is the proper house for it. Plus, I am representing the whole neighborhood, not just one house. I have to represent all the residents in my purse ward. And the consensus is it's not a good fit for the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Having heard none, and the motion is for a second reading of this bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Jason, can you poll the council for me?
Sure. Scribner?
No.
Bogus?
No.
Hiller?
No.
Cross?
No.
Foster? Franklin? That's a yes. I didn't hear you. Robinson?
Is this for a second reading?
Yes.
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 And Ames?
Yes.
Okay, we got a four-four.
We have a four-four.
Yep, I'll go ahead and split that and go for a second reading. And that passes?
Okay. Bill Number 2025-119. An ordinance granting a special use permit to Recovery Lighthouse for transitional housing to be used for a parsonage on property located 1809 West 10th Street in the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that is on the floor? All right, having heard none, roll call please.
Scribner?
I do have a question. Are we voting to approve or deny that?
Yeah, so everything's written in the affirmative, so this would be an ordinance granting a special use permit to Recovery Lighthouse for transitional housing to be used for the parsonage.
Bogus?
No.
Hiller?
No.
Cross?
No.
Foster?
No.
Franklin?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Ames?
No.
You have zero yes, eight no.
Okay, and the bill fails on final passage. All right, thank you.
Okay, the second item this evening is a rezoning classification, R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Two Family Residential. And, let's see. David Nortka submitted to application, an application to rezone a parcel located immediately west of 813 East 19th Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Two Family Residential. Public notice of the rezoning hearing was published on June 17, 2025, and notification letters were mailed to all property owners within 185 feet of subject property. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a hearing on July 2, 2025, during which all interested parties were given an opportunity to comment. Following the hearing, the commission voted four to two in support of the rezoning request. The property includes lots eight and nine, Block Four of Felix Addition in Sedalia, and is legally described in Exhibit A of the ordinance. With the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommended recommendation complete, the ordinance is now ready before the city council for final consideration to change the zoning classification from R1 to R2.
All right, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-120.
Bill Number 2025-120. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Two Family Residential on certain property located at the lot immediately west of 813 East 19th in the city of Sedalia, Missouri in accordance with Chapter 64 of the City Code of the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading?
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that is on the floor?
I would like to say something, please.
All right, you have 10 minutes.
In looking at our master plan, our zoning like use is encouraged, and I don't feel that this fits that model, moving it from an R1 to an R2. So I am not in support of changing this.
All right, we have one council member speaking in opposition. Do I have anyone who would like to speak in opposition or support of the bill? Going once, going twice? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Jason, can you poll the council?
Sure. Bogus?
No.
Hiller?
No.
Cross?
No.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
You have five yes, three no.
All right, the motion passes. Now we'll go ahead and move on with the second reading.
Bill Number 2025-120. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Two Family Residential on certain property located at the lot immediately west of 813 East 19th in the city of Sedalia, Missouri in accordance with Chapter 64 of the City Code of the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that is on the floor? Having heard none, roll call please.
Bogus?
No.
Hiller?
No.
Cross?
No.
Foster?
No.
Franklin?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Ames?
No.
Scribner?
No.
You have zero yes, eight no.
Bill, the bill fails on the second reading.
All right. Third item for tonight is Uptown Theater Tiff Project Development Agreement. Legal staff has submitted for council approval to repeal ordinance number 10492, which previously authorized a tax increment financing Tiff contract between the city of Sedalia and Downtown Development, Inc., for the Uptown Theater redevelopment project. The contract was executed in 2016 as part of the city's Midtown Tiff Plan. Since the time of approval of the agreement, the original developer, Sedalia Downtown Development, Inc., has never signed the agreement and subsequently sold the property, rendering the agreement unenforceable. As a result, the Tiff contract is no longer applicable, and repeal is necessary to formally remove the outdated ordinance from the city's records. Approval of this repeal ordinance will have no financial impact and does not affect the border Midtown Tiff Plan, which remains in effect. The action is strictly administrative and intended to ensure the city's Tiff records remain current and accurate.
Okay, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-121.
Bill Number 2025-121. An ordinance repealing ordinance number 10492, which approved a tax increment financing contract between the city of Sedalia and Sedalia Downtown Development Incorporated for the Uptown Theater project.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-121. An ordinance repealing ordinance number 10492, which approved a tax increment financing contract between the city of Sedalia and Sedalia Downtown Development Incorporated for the Uptown Theater project.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that is on the floor? Having heard none? Uh, let's see, are we on second reading? I can't remember.
You need roll call?
Roll call please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Moving along to other business, we have liquor licenses. Call for the reading of liquor licenses.
We have one new license tonight and 10 renewals. We have a new license for Nathaniel Crowe doing businesses, The Vault Restaurante at 322 South Ohio, Suite 100, for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. There are renewals for Lindsay Palo doing businesses, Applebee's, 3320 West Broadway, for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. Crystal Sims doing businesses, Woods Supermarket Incorporated, 701 East Broadway, for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Christina Sherman doing businesses, Jiffy Stop Food Mart, Number 591, at 1722 West Broadway, for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Mary Jane Stewart doing businesses, American Legion Post 642, at 2016 West Main, for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. Carlos Enrique Sadio doing businesses, B&amp;B Sedalia Galaxy 10, at 4104 West Main, for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. Kathy Getz doing businesses, Break Time, Number 3167, at 101 Rebar Road, for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Diana Green doing business as the Greenhorn LLC, GBA Little Big Horn, at 150 South Limit Suite 100, for beer and wine. Stacy Federer doing businesses, Fitter's Fifth Street Pub, at 500 South Ohio, for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. Erica Eisenminger doing businesses, Ivory Grill LLC, at 317 South Ohio, for liquor by the drink. And Doug Bennett doing businesses, Liberty Center Association for the Arts, at 111 West Fifth, for liquor by the drink.
Motion to approve and block?
I have a motion to approve and block. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to approve and block and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding those liquor licenses? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving along to any miscellaneous items from the city council or interim city administrator? I do think there's an opportunity here on, so we had that big budget amendment with regards to our, our budget for the Bowling Alley Fire Station and Training Center. You know, we get into a lot of these big projects that span multiple years, and that is difficult to come up with, to track that cost, right? Because you initially come up with your price estimate, years go by, things change, and of course, you have the cost of goods and everything else increasing. What I would like to entertain is a motion directing city staff to come up with a process by which we tie that, those initial cost estimates to CPI, or a segment of CPI, probably one more in line with construction costs. And then each year, that, that cost or that price tag with that item is recalculated. We add on that additional cost. And so that, whenever we, whenever the contract comes to us, we have a closer target as far as what we're looking for on price. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Because like this fire station stuff, that was, I want to say it was 2019, 2020, whenever we initially got that price estimate. You know, prices between here and there have completely changed.
Yeah.
So I think that's going to help as far as with the, the planning of it and the planning of those big projects and our budgeting and everything else, in that a way we're not caught to with big surprises. But I would certainly entertain that motion directing city staff to come up with that policy mechanism.
I would make that motion.
And I would second it in saying that as far as the finance committee is concerned, we have our budget meeting in December and in January on all of these budgeted items. And of course, we say, yes, you can go out and buy this. Yes, this is what we're going to set aside. That's why we don't have to have the monthly meetings as often. But we have to realize that during that timeframe, costs go up. Sometimes we get lucky and costs go down, but it's already been set aside, it's already been decided, so.
Yes. And so what we'll do is, and too, in that motion, we'll, we'll come up with that policy adjustment, we'll take that through Finance and the Administration Committee, and then bring that to the open council with consideration. So, all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Anybody else? All right, moving along, we'll go ahead and get started with our Good and Welfare. This is the time we've set aside for residents of Sedalia to address their city council directly. As a reminder, anyone wishing to speak must have signed up in advance using the form located in the lobby prior to the start of the meeting. That form requires your name, address, telephone number, and the agenda item you wish to address. Comments must be related to items on tonight's agenda unless formal written request to speak on a non-agenda topic was submitted at least two business days in advance. Each speaker will be allotted up to three minutes to present their remarks. Please clearly state your name and address for the record when you come to the microphone. This is not a time for debate or dialogue with the council members. The council chambers is a limited public forum, and all remarks must be directed to the council as a whole. I would remind everyone that personal attacks on specific city employees by name or title are not permitted. If you wish to file a formal complaint against an employee, you may do so in writing through the clerk's office. Disruptive behavior such as shouting, refusing to yield the floor, or blocking the view of others will not be tolerated and violators may be asked to leave or removed by law enforcement if necessary. Your comments tonight will be recorded as part of the official public record. We thank you for your cooperation in maintaining decorum and for your continued participation in the civic life of our city. At this time, we will begin calling forward those who have signed up to speak. Clerk Myers, if you could go ahead and lead us off.
Sure, I have 11 individuals that signed up for agenda items.
Okay.
Start with those. First person I have is Justin Newell, and he wants to talk about the transitional housing special use.
Okay. Justin Newell, if you'd go ahead and please step to the microphone, state your name, your address, and then you'll be allotted three minutes. Also, too, for everybody's edification, there will be a little, ah, we call it the burning fuse. So that'll, once you start talking, it'll burn away, and it'll get to three minutes is kind of a visual representation of your time limit. Go ahead.
My name is Justin Newell. I live at 1815 West 10th. I wanted to express and urge the vote against the Lighthouse Recovery, just for safety and peace of mind for my family. I believe I have eight neighbors here that we all, I don't want to miss, we are not against the mission of Lighthouse Recovery, just the location. There are so many unanswered questions. I have family members who've been, have gone through the addiction process, one who is still an addict, and everything we heard about this just scares us and terrifies us. I have three kids. My son is a senior, and my two little girls are at home with my wife, and she's homeschooling my oldest, and we really, really just were afraid of what was going to come down the road, and I wanted to urge the vote against that location. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newell.
The next person I have is Ron Newell, same subject.
Okay, come on up, Ron.
My name's Ron Newell. I live at 2419 West Third, but Justin is my son, and I was speaking and opposing it too because of my grandchildren, worried about what kind of people might get drawn to the neighborhood, not the ladies that need to help, but the people that are there to prey upon someone who might be weak and not be able to say no to what these other folks are trying to get them. They have already gone through a process of trying to get away from that, and I think they might be a little bit more susceptible to someone getting them back on it. And like I said, our grandchildren and other people's grandchildren deserve us, for us to get up and try to protect them. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newell.
And these going forward will still be for the same subject, Mr. Mayor. Kim Newell?
Come on up and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kim Newell, and I live at 1815 West 10th Street, and I was also just coming to speak against having the transitional housing down the road from my family and my children. We still haven't got a lot of information of what exactly is going to take place, other than the transitional housing. The mayor did suggest that Lighthouse Recovery try to get ahold of us to inform us of what's going on. The only information that I got was on June 25th, and that was the same day that they were going to do an informational meeting, so that did not give me enough time to make accommodations to show up for that meeting. And then June 27th at 1:00 PM in the afternoon, which is also an inconvenient time. I did reach out and try to contact the director, and I have not received a phone call back from her setting something up. So it's, again, we're not against what a lighthouse is trying to do, we just don't think this is a good location for them, having a liquor store right within walking distance. There has been a motel that has been shut down several times for activities, and there's gas stations, very easy accessible for people who are in that recovery process that could go into remission, and something could happen. And I'm just worried about the, mostly the safety of my family, my property, my neighbors. We look out for our neighbors. We always are checking on them, we have each other's phone numbers. We all got together for a petition and tried to get together to try to prevent this from happening, and specifically our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sherri Bridges.
Come on up.
So I am speaking. My name's Sherri Bridges, and I live at 23036 Ryan Road in Sedalia, Missouri. So I am myself a person in long-term recovery. I stand before you today not just to speak, but to represent a community of individuals who are working every single day to rebuild their lives, restore their dignity, and reclaim their future. Recovery is defined as a process of change through which individuals improve their health and wellness, live a self-directed life, and strive to reach their full potential. But how can someone strive toward their full potential if they're coming out of treatment or incarceration and going straight back into the same unstable, unhealthy environment that contributed to their use in the first place? I want to be honest with you. After the last meeting, I left feeling completely heartbroken. Some of the comments that were made left me feeling invisible and worthless. Like my efforts, my growth, and my humanity didn't matter. But I'm here to say I do matter, and so do the thousands of others who are walking this path. I am not a burden, I am a taxpayer, I'm a community volunteer. I show up, I give back, and I do my part. Recovery doesn't erase the past, but it does empower us to build a better future, not just for ourselves, but for our families, our neighborhoods, and the society we're proud to be a part of. Transitional housing is not just a compassionate investment, it's a smart one. It reduces homelessness, decreases relapse rates, increases employment, and lowers the burden on emergency services and the justice system. In other words, it works. So I ask you, please see us for who we are and for who we are becoming, not as problems to be solved, but as people who deserve support, dignity, and a place to call home while we continue doing the hard work of recovery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Roland?
Hello. I'm Amanda Roland, and I live at 1314 Southwest 295th Road in Holden. I come here today as an employee with Recovery Lighthouse since 2020. I am a nationally recognized leader in the substance use profession. I go to countless conferences on housing, and I've been our housing director at Recovery Lighthouse in Warrensburg for over three years. I hear what the community is saying, and I understand their fears about the neighborhood, and that's very valid, very valid. In Warrensburg, we have four houses. One of them is on our busiest street in Warrensburg, and I will tell you that some people, when they come to do work at my house, they don't even know it's a sober living house. Another, two of our apartments are right across from the bar. But I'm here to tell you that no matter where we go or what we do, there's going to be triggers, there's going to be people in our community that's struggling, it's up to us to offer that support. I am also a person in long-term recovery, so I suffered from addiction for 20 years. I wouldn't have the successes that I have for now if it wasn't for Recovery Lighthouse and transitional housing. There are people struggling with addiction right now in your community. However, they're in your parks, around the streets. They might be in a very abusive house, and they can't leave because they don't have the support, or maybe they're in that abandoned house right down the street. Recovery Lighthouse has already done a tremendous job at serving this county since 2008. Transitional housing is just one step further. In Missouri, all transitional housing has to be NAR accredited. That means they are nationally accredited housing, all housing, and that is what we have. So that means we have random tests from the state, we have random inspections from the state, as well as our community leaders come in all the time. We have a house leader in each of our houses, and they live there 24/7. We do random observe drug screens, we do multiple times a week, they have their PBTs that they do every night, they have curfews, they have all these, all of these structures are in place, and I understand that the community did not have all that information before, and I apologize for that. But transitional housing is much more than just having that structure in place. It's about giving them the opportunity to reconnect in the community that they came from, to reconnect to the ones that they've hurt. You know, I know that when I was a little girl, I did not want, or I did not think I was going to spend 20 years in active use. Thank goodness, because of the support services that I got through Recovery Lighthouse and transitional housing, I'm able to be the leader that I am today. So I ask that you please, I understand you guys already voted, but I ask that you please still consider transitional housing in Sedalia, Missouri. And if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Callen?
I'm Lauren Callen. I live at 318 East Jackson, and I'm in recovery as well, but I also wanted to say that I thought that not everybody in recovery, I mean, there's homeless people out there. This isn't just about being in recovery, it's about helping homeless people as well. You know, not everybody that's in recovery is on drugs. I mean, not everybody that's homeless is on drugs, is what I'm saying. I'm sorry, but a fellow friend of mine wrote this, and I told her I would read it for her because she's nervous. This transitional house wouldn't be different than the embassy. It's a safe place for women, so they're not on the streets to ensure their safety. Life-changing events take place a lot, one never knows how those events play out, you know, how hard they will hit, if the outcome will be good or bad, but these events do happen, and as a result, a person could lose everything. According to the Bible, we aren't meant to judge others, we're supposed to encourage them in positive ways and help them. This transitional house would be a major step in the right direction. Stereotyping everyone is wrong, it's just because someone is homeless doesn't mean that they're strung out on drugs. The community needs to understand that no two people are alike, their willpowers aren't the same, their personalities aren't the same, their strive to become a better person and live a different lifestyle aren't the same. This house would be, would have rules for the women to follow, such as drug testing, Bible study groups, church, just as the embassy does for men. And should a person fail at following the rules, then they would be excused from the house, meaning they wouldn't be, they'd be asked to leave. By guiding these people to God, we're helping them understand that God can make all their struggles easier, you know, as long as they develop a relationship with Him, read His Word, and obey His, obey, obey full-heartedly, sorry. No one's perfect, but everyone deserves a chance to correct their wrongs. Everyone deserves a chance to show society that they can change and succeed, as long as they commit to the change. Instead of being negative, they need to remain positive. Help them find their relationship with God, encourage them, you know, to let go of all the negativity. Let's see, given their chance, in a matter of six months, this person's life could become so much better than anyone could imagine. Thanks to the Recovery Lighthouse, I'm attending church, studying the Bible, I have a whole new outlook on life and how to live it. Before, my world fell apart, not knowing how to handle things, I resorted towards unlawful things that I'm not proud of, but also, to be honest, had I not, I wouldn't have even entered in the doors of the Recovery Lighthouse. I wouldn't have found my way back into God's grace. I wouldn't have met such a wonderful, caring people, and I would probably be sitting in prison. I took, I took the, am I done? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, guys.
Your time has expired, ma'am.
So I'm not a very fast reader, but anyways, I just, thank you for listening to me. I just, you know, it's just not everybody that's, not everybody that's homeless are on drugs.
Thank you.
Megan Zeller?
My name's Megan Zeller. My address is 28506 Bohan Road. I am the Information Coordinator at Recovery Lighthouse. I started there a year ago. Thank you for considering this matter, we appreciate you on that. I would like to ask you to think about transitional housing this way, though. Many years ago, there was another company that started in this town, and many folks stated that this was a great program. And when it came to putting in their housing, though, they were met with the same resistance that we're met with today, the resistance of not in my backyard. It's called the NIMBY factor, for anybody who knows it. Now, I can tell you this company does very well today and serves many clients, and this company is CHS. We too are many, and we want the chance to do the same, to change lives. We want the chance to show you that even though they have the fear, you know, and it's very real for them, the threat is not, it shouldn't be what they perceive. These women are looking for a chance to be in the safe, loving place that they call home, the place that is stable to their recovery and their support. They aren't looking to invite their old ways into their new lives. We are, are we going to do as God called us to and love one another and show ourselves as the Good Samaritan, who helped the one in need? Or will we be the priest who crossed the street to the other side and left them on the street to suffer? My heart is to give them this chance, and if that isn't what you need to hear, my husband and I moved into a new home ourselves three years ago. It appeared safe and quiet, but about a month ago, a meth lab was busted down the street from us. And the problems are already here. You guys know us well. If we were to sell that house, you never know what you're going to get. You never know what's moving in next door. And all of you have commended us at one point or another on our journey with our clients. I believe it's time to give us a chance. You didn't have a problem with our office. In fact, it was stated by so many who you didn't even know that we were there. But does that not prove that we are only, not only loyal to our clients, but to the peace and the bettering of our community as well? Please vote ayes.
Naomi Smith?
Come on up and say your name and address for the record, and you've got three minutes.
I'm Naomi Smith, 1815 South Grand. I'm actually reading this for Carol Martin, she cannot be here tonight. My name is Carol Martin. I'm a mother of six, a college student, a certified peer specialist trainer, and a woman with over seven years of sobriety. I'm not speaking tonight as a statistic, I'm speaking as a success story. I know there are people here tonight who are scared, scared that a transitional living house will bring crime or danger into their neighborhood, scared that their children might be harmed just by living near people in recovery. But I want you to hear me when I say this, what people in recovery bring is not danger, it's determination, it's accountability, it's transformation. Let me ask a question. If we are worried about addiction rubbing off on our kids or impacting their lives, I truly hope you're planning to homeschool them or enroll them in elite, private schools, because the truth is, drugs aren't in recovery houses. They're already in your children's schools, they're on the buses, they're in the bathrooms, they're at the Boys and Girls Club, they're in the very places we pretend are safe. So no, a transitional living home isn't the threat, it's part of the solution. When we isolate people in recovery, we don't protect our community, we weaken it, because we're sending a message to our children that people who make mistakes don't deserve to rebuild, that people who try to heal should be pushed to the outskirts. We're not teaching safety, we're teaching shame. And I'll say this with my whole chest, I am a better mother because of my recovery. I parent with empathy, not ego. I show up with consistency because I know what it feels like to not be able to. And I've raised children who understand second chances, boundaries, and compassion, because they've lived it. People in recovery are often the strongest voices in the community. We have been to rock bottom and made the choice to rise. That makes us resilient, that makes us leaders, and it sure as heck makes us worthy of a safe place to live while we rebuild. If this city believes in second chances, if it believes in healing, in restoration, in real change, then it should welcome transitional homes right in the heart of the community, not hide them away like a shameful secret. Because what's truly dangerous isn't living near somebody in recovery. What's dangerous is raising a generation to fear what they don't understand and to judge those who are trying to do better. Thank you for your time, and I hope tonight you choose compassion over comfort, because lives depend on it.
Thank you.
Danny Bremer?
My name is Danny Bremer. I live at 4200 West Main, Lot 58. I'm a person in recovery from a disease that takes countless people a year. If it wasn't for the Recovery Lighthouse program and my own will to find sobriety, I could have been one of those numbers of lost souls. As a person in recovery, I am thankful for being given the second chance at life, not only for myself, but my community and even my children. Giving people the chance to change is an overlooked belief from an old thought, addicts don't change, right? I stand here today as living proof that that is a false statement. We do change. I can't speak for all of us, but I can say, the road to recovery is a trial by fire. It's not easy, but it is possible, and as a person in recovery, a trial by fire is something that I'm used to, and sometimes I find worth in the struggle. We all make mistakes, some just forget to get off the bus before it's too late.
Thank you.
Jessica Sealy?
Hi, my name is Jessica Sealy. I live at 1815 South Kentucky, and I have been an addict for 22 years. I am 41 days sober, and if it wasn't for Lighthouse, I would not be there. I gave my heart to the Lord on December 25th, I changed my entire life. After I gave my heart to the Lord, I slowly went back, and then once I walked into the Lighthouse doors, my life, my heart, my whole, everything changed. They gave me meaning, they made me comfortable, and if it wasn't for their support, I don't think I would be 41 days sober. And we change lives. We come in and we love people, and we know what it's like to come from the bottom to the top, and we do our very best to comfort and provide anything that anyone needs, they are there for us through the entire thing. And if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't have made it this far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Candy Mays?
Meyer?
Meyer? Sorry, forgive me.
Well, I didn't write it that sloppy, did I? Hi, I'm Candy Meyer. I live at 21205 Morgan Road in Sedalia, and I am also somebody in long-term recovery. I was an active user for 27 years, I've been in active recovery for 20 years. I am a certified peer specialist, as well as the family advocate for Pettis County. And I work two jobs, I pay taxes, I'm an active member of both my community and my church, and I'm here today because I too believe in the power of recovery. I know firsthand how difficult it is to rebuild your life after addiction. Recovery is not just about stopping the use of substances, it's about building a new way of life. That takes time. It takes support, and it takes a safe and stable environment. That is what recovery housing or transitional housing is. The truth is, many people don't get a fair shot at recovery because they don't have the safe place to land. They are ready and willing to change, but the resources just aren't there, and that is something we can change. After our last meeting, I too was a little downtrodden, because, you know, I'm not, my life is not defined by my addiction, okay? My life is defined by what I have become since then and what I continue to become. Let me, okay, people in recovery are not worthless. They're resilient, they're very resilient, and we're hardworking, it takes a lot of hard work to get where we're at. And we do everything we can to give back to the communities we once harmed. I sold dope right down the road here for years, okay? Transitional housing is not about helping individuals, it's about strengthening families, it's about safer neighborhoods, it's about reducing crime and homelessness. It's an investment in long-term healing and community wellness. Please don't wait until another life is lost or another family is torn apart. Let's give people in recovery a real chance, allow the transitional housing in this community. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
And we're on to the non-agenda-related items. I have two individuals that signed up. First one is Debbie Covington, and that's on council committee meetings and publication.
Debbie Covington, PO Box 52, Sedalia, Missouri, 65302. Tonight is a prime example of Tonight is a prime example of publicizing our committee meetings and our council committee meetings and bringing the community together and the public together, you know, to talk about things that affect our public, ourselves, our community. I initially put in a request a couple weeks ago to speak about city council committee meetings not being publicized and streamed. There are times I've requested to speak and I don't receive response on -- to have my time to prepare on the non-agenda item with only given three minutes to speak. Over the last couple of weeks, I've noticed meetings have begun to be publicized and few have been livestreamed, though. I appreciate the effort, whomever is standing up and making this happen, thank you. Again, tonight's a prime example. But for years, the public has been kept in the dark about how, why, and when decisions are made. It's no secret that committee meetings, where the real discussions happen, were not streamed or easily accessible to the public, but only after public scrutiny and pressure did the city finally start making those meetings available. So, I have a question. Why did it take public outcry for this to change? Why does the body only become transparent after being called out? We all know the answer: Keeping committee meetings off the record kept the public out of the loop. It allowed decisions to move forward quietly, shielded from public oversight, and dangerously close to violating the spirit, if not the letter, of Missouri's sunshine law. We have the timeline of public works, finance, and admin, community development, and at least two of these committees had no record for meetings since December of last year. So, I ask again, with all the resolutions, bills, and ordinances that have been passed in open session, when and how were these decisions being made, if you weren't meeting, when there was little to no discussion in the daze? I am not stupid, the people of Sedalia are not stupid. We know what it looks like when decisions are made behind closed doors and then rubber-stamped in public, and quite frankly, I'm tired of it. The beginning of the meeting tonight was an example of that. I appreciate the effort to now somewhat publicize this, but it doesn't take away from the fact the body violated Missouri's sunshine law, and the public trust will continue to follow the progress on publicizing and livestreaming council committee meetings. And, of course, passing anti-first amendment ordinances, but it's okay. We will speak up for transparency from this body and one day repeal and bury the anti-first amendment ordinance. Have a good night.
Thank you. Come next.
The last person I have is Ray Ellison. Is he here? I don't think Mr. Ellison was here.
Ray, are you here? Okay.
That's the last person I have.
Okay, all right. Well, if there's nothing further from the body, I will entertain a motion to move to closed-door session.
Motion to move to closed-door.
And that is pursuant to subsections 1, illegal advice, 2, real estate, 3, personnel, 12 negotiated contracts of RXMO 610-2021. Any discussion regarding that motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding that? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Now, if I can get up. Trouble.
Clumsy old man.
I saved your life.
Clumsy old fart.
You okay?
Oh, yeah. I stepped on it.
That leg.
That leg there. I'll bet scores to eight.
I don't think so, buddy.
Cheese, brody.
Clumsy old man.
I saved your life.
Clumsy old fart.
You okay?
Oh, yeah. I stepped on it.
That leg.
That leg there. I'll bet scores to eight.
I don't think so, buddy.
Okay, are we back live? We're good? All right, we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion and second to return to the regular open meeting.
We'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
All right, we have the approval of the closed-door meeting items. The first one is a special appointment. Call for the reading of the special appointment.
Just Sedalia City Council, from Mayor Andrew Dawson, special appointment. According to authority as mayor, I'm making final appointment Matthew Wirt to the office of City Administrator.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve in a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding the appointment? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, and now I'll call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-122.
Bill Number 2025-122. An ordinance approving and accepting an agreement binding between the cities of Sedalia, Missouri, and Matthew Wirt.
Do I have a motion for second reading?
Second reading.
Second.
A motion for second reading and a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill that's before you? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-122. An ordinance approving and accepting an agreement binding between the cities of Sedalia, Missouri, and Matthew Wirt.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill that is on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
All in favor?
Now, I'd like to go ahead and give Matthew the floor for a few minutes to say a few words, so.
I'll get up there.
Yep, Mr. Wirt, you have the floor.
Well, I didn't write anything down this time, but probably I think the thing that I would say is, thank you, I look forward to this opportunity. You know, I started working for the city a long time ago, and I never thought that I would be much more than a road sergeant or detective sergeant or something like that, so it's interesting to see how far that's came, but I'm proud to have came this far, and mostly, I'm proud to do it for the community, because I'm excited about the future, I'm excited about what that holds, and I appreciate that opportunity. And I'm not a perfect man, I don't do everything that way, but I ask for patience and grace, and I'll return the favor. And I look forward to what we can all accomplish in the years to come, so thank you again.
Thank you, Matthew. Let's see, moving along, we'll now go ahead and call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-124.
Bill Number 2025-123. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to real estate contract binding between the cities of Sedalia, Missouri, and McDonald's USA LLC, a Delaware limited liability company.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill Number 2025-123. Do you have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-123. An ordinance authorizing an amendment to real estate contract binding between the cities of Sedalia, Missouri, and McDonald's USA LLC, a Delaware limited liability company.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Now, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the Bill of 2025-124.
Bill Number 2025-124. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as 633 East Broadway Boulevard from the cities of Sedalia, Missouri, to McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-124. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as 633 East Broadway Boulevard from the cities of Sedalia, Missouri, to McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Now, I'll call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-125.
Bill Number 2025-125. An ordinance authorizing a temporary construction easement to McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation, for construction of a building and related improvements.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-125. An ordinance authorizing a temporary construction easement to McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation, for construction of a building and related improvements.
Final passage?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor, motion passes. I'll now call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-126.
Bill Number 2025-126. An ordinance authorizing a storm sewer easement agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation.
Second reading.
I have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill Number 2025-126. Do you have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-126. An ordinance authorizing a storm sewer easement agreement binding between the cities of Sedalia, Missouri, and McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill that is on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
All in favor?
I will now call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-127.
Bill Number 2025-127. An ordinance approving and accepting a storm sewer easement agreement binding between McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation, and the cities of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-127. An ordinance approving and accepting a storm sewer easement agreement binding between McDonald's Real Estate Company, a Delaware corporation, and the cities of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
All in favor?
I will now call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-128.
Bill Number 2025-128. An ordinance approving a vacant land sale contract for the sale of property commonly known as 201 East Broadway Boulevard from the city of Sedalia, Missouri, to Le Maison LLC.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill.